Folks, it's now five thirty and we're going to see public comment on our ballot questions and articles. There's a kind of a pre-town meeting sort of thing. After this, we're going to include this at least the next thirty minutes. And then how we're going to have our regular meeting. So Scott, would you like to do a brief outline on the differences that we have here today?
So the twenty twenty-five warning. Is the annual town meeting Wilmington, Vermont. Scheduled for Tuesday, March fourth, twenty twenty-five. The legal voters of the town of Wilmington are hereby notified and warned to meet at the Old School Community Center, OSEC, in said Wilmington, Vermont at ten AM on Tuesday, March fourth, twenty twenty-five, to consider and act on the following articles not involving voting by Australian ballot. Voting for all Australian ballot articles will be held at the OSEC in said Wilmington, Vermont, on March fourth, twenty twenty-five, from seven AM to seven PM. Article one. Shall the town vote to appoint a moderator for the twenty twenty-five annual town meeting? Everybody, I think. Many people know that Bob Fisher stepped over the line and he's now in Marlborough. There is some interest in having a moderator this year other than the chair. And so Bob Fisher is interested if in fact the voters in the room at the time will appoint him as the moderator for the meeting. And that's the that's the nature of the first article is to appoint a moderator. Article two is is the normal language to elect all town and town school district officers required by law. As everyone knows, that's by Australian ballot. Article three. Shall the town vote to rescind the operation of licensed cannabis retailers and integrated licensees, except for those licensed cannabis retailers and integrated licensees operating at the time of any rescission pursuant to Title VII Vermont statutes annotated. Eight sixty-three sub A sub two. This is also by Australian ballot and the polls open seven AM until seven PM. Would anyone from the select board like to comment on Article three?
I think we talked about this the last time. It's the same same crowd that's here.
What we're doing is just capping the licenses. So we don't have
retail shops up and down our town. This way here, we can we get these one. Now, somebody asked me the other day, in fact, so what happens if one goes out of business and somebody else supply? Really haven't crossed that bridge yet. People have to cross that bridge when it happens or if it does. We're down to one. We're down to one. So but again, this here is just going to not have more than two, right?
Isn't that a grower? No. No, we only we're only regulating retail operations. I I would have to I'll have to look that up and get you an answer, Meg.
What the licenses we have had, we have one in this situation.
Can you come up? So the quick, John, the question was, what's an integrated licensee?
Oh.
And I don't know the answer to that, but I'm sure it's all related to the retail business since that's all we get to regulate.
So an integrated licensee holds more than one license. So for example, a retailer could also be a medical licensee.
Can you crack that up?
Yeah, that could be a medical one. Also, integrated licensee can hold multiple licenses, so they could be a producer, manufacturer, or a grower.
Okay, doesn't mean separately, doesn't mean growers because you don't, the select board doesn't issue them licenses anyway, right?
Yeah, we can't, we cannot prohibit. The the way the legislation was set up is we could approve retailer retail licenses we in our town, but with respect to grow growing licenses or licensees, as long as they, you know, pass muster with the state and with the Cannabis Control Board in the town, we can't otherwise control them or prohibit them.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome. I can't hear. Can somebody?
I'm coming up, John.
We're coming.
So it says the town to rescind the operation licensed cannabis. Are there other licenses already issued that are not being used? Otherwise, what are we rescinding?
So so voters had to vote in the first in the first place
Right.
To allow retail operations essentially in the town. What this does is reverses that, but it but it the legacy operations that are still in town would still operate. Once they go out of business, then no other, no other, so basically caps caps a number retailers to what you have at the time the vote was taken.
So we're not rescinding existing licenses.
Correct.
We're rescinding the allowance of new applications.
That's correct.
That's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
So just a caveat on that, it's at some later date, someone quit petition to reopening the, you know, retail license process if they chose to on a other town meeting ballot.
The next. The next article would be to see if the town will vote to accept the town report. The report, that's that's usually pretty standard, and then Article four begins with the budget. Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three million, six hundred twenty-five thousand, nine hundred eighty-six dollars to care for the expenses and liabilities of the general fund for fiscal year twenty twenty-six? That'll be July first, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Questions? No. All right.
Questions?
Scott, Article five?
Shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one million, eight hundred forty-seven thousand, seven hundred forty-four dollars to care for the expenses and liabilities of the town road budget for fiscal year twenty-six? And again, that's July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. The next item is shall the town vote to raise and appropriate four thousand dollars to Southeast Vermont Transit, the mover whose purpose is to provide year-round public transit services in Wyndham and Southern Windsor Counties. This is the first year since they have been in business that they've asked for some money from the town to support the mover. So there's Randy came and talked to us and there's roughly, I think, in the vicinity of about eighty percent that's federally and state funded. And another twenty percent, I believe, where they have to find funds to fill that hole. And that's what they're asking, not just Wilmington, but they've asked other towns in the past, such as Brattleboro and a lot of other towns that the mover works works within those towns. And so this is the first year that they've come to Wilmington.
I do believe they've asked each town for the same amount. That's that was the indication that we had received. They 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 had they had not asked all the towns by the time Randy had arrived here. Okay, but
Yes.
Right. We have never contributed to the mover. That we're kind of surprised that they took so long to ask us, but get petition to the long time part.
Next article, shall the town vote to allocate the state per parcel payment estimated to be twenty-six thousand, nine hundred sixty-two dollars to the reappraisal reserve fund? This has been done every year, probably for the last six, seven years? Where we've where we've placed that money into a fund for reappraisal. Now, just remember that reappraisals, the state wants them to to occur sooner than every ten years. And of course, we just went through, within a five-year period, we just went through a statistical reappraisal. So theoretically, probably the next one for the town will be within six years. Good news is is that probably two-thirds of the towns in the state are in the same boat in terms of reappraisal. And there are not enough appraisals, there are not enough people to assess properties for all all those towns, so. Next is shall the town vote to raise and appropriate two hundred fifty-five thousand dollars to fund the highway town road capital town road equipment capital fund? Next is shall the town vote to raise and appropriate one hundred sixty thousand dollars to fund the bridge capital fund? Next is shall the town vote to raise and appropriate twenty thousand dollars to fund highway building capital fund? Next, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate two hundred sixty-five thousand dollars to fund the fire department equipment capital fund? Next, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate twenty thousand dollars to fund the old firehouse capital fund? Next, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate twenty thousand dollars to fund the Memorial Hall capital fund? Next, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate twelve thousand dollars to fund the library capital reserve fund? Next, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate twenty thousand dollars to fund the town hall capital fund? Next, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate sixty thousand dollars to fund the police equipment capital fund? Next, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate five thousand dollars to fund the transfer station capital fund? Next, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate eighty thousand dollars to fund the public lands and fences capital fund and for the purpose of construction and maintenance on the Lake Riponda Dam? Next, shall the voters authorize payment of real property taxes into two installments with due dates beginning beginning August the twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, and February the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-six, by delivery to Town Hall by four thirty PM on a due date or postmarked on or before the due date? Those are Fridays. Next, shall the town allow for the election of a non-resident of the town to the position of town moderator so long as that person is a resident of the state of Vermont pursuant to Title seventeen, two six four six A?
A question on twenty, and I guess connected with Article one. So I know you said Bob Fisher, who has since moved out of town, is still interested in doing that. How's that going to work on town meeting day if at this point, I'm assuming he's not allowed to be town moderator?
What's going to happen at town meeting day, John, is going to, I'm going to stand up, I guess, unless I'm a guest. Open the meeting very quickly and then ask for the vote about allowing him to be the of the moderator moderator for that that one meeting. Now, we're allowed by law, we've gone through this with our attorneys and with the six in town, the end of and the Secretary of State's office. We're allowed to do it. Of course, John came up with the fact that there is a manual for the moderator. It states that the moderator remains the moderator until such time he or she is replaced. Right? Now, we don't have anybody in the pipeline looking to to take his job. Okay, so hopefully, maybe there will be some light-ins this year. And we're not, I don't know, I don't, Teresa's in here, we usually have so many percentage.
Nobody, nobody filed a petition for
It's not, it's not something everybody jumps.
So what's the purpose of Article twenty then, if Bob can still do it?
To change it, to change it, that would basically, the next time that there's a moderator opening, which we anticipate that there will be next year, he could run. He could petition and run, basically, or anybody anybody residing, I mean, I mean, it sounds like it's specifically for Bob, but you have to say anyone who resides in the state of Vermont could effectively run for moderator in the town of Wilmington if this passes.
Okay, I, I, but I wasn't sure how those two connected.
It's 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 another one of these nuances here where the state of Vermont. And but we'd like to hold on to Bob until such time somebody steps up and said that we'd like to do it. I know him's going to have the same issue this year too. We aren't, we aren't stepping down.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Go ahead, Meg. Do you want the job?
Different article. Thank you, though.
I still say you should be up at night.
I'm not that crazy. So Article, where was it? Thirteen, I'm sorry, I didn't
Let me, let me, I just have to make a clarification on what we presented today.
Okay.
It's going to be slightly different, but all the numbers are correct because we printed the wrong warning. Okay, just so everyone understands, all the information is correct. It's just in the wrong order. We're going to move police, the police capital fund up higher in case Matt has to in case the chief has to go on a call or something. So instead of making them wait all day, that's the only difference. All the numbers are correct.
Article thirteen, funding the old firehouse capital fund.
That's true.
I under, I assume I know that it needs a lot of work, but I was curious about the last meeting I was at, which was probably several years ago about that building. It seemed like there was going to be a period of reviewing whether we were going to keep it or sell it since there seemed to be an interest in having it sold and not be a town building because partly because of the amount of work needed. So I don't know if it fits in here exactly, but could somebody comment on whether we're keeping this forever or two years or is it making money from tenants?
It is making some money. It's not sending Walmart fires, that's for sure. We're breaking even or not, I don't know. We do have to, we did repair one part of the roof last year. There's two two levels of moving. We have to repair the other side. It has turned out to be a wonderful drop-in center for those that get needed, need those services. Senior Solutions as well. I know that obviously Voices of Hope, they're the ones that really get this next started. We were able to rent out the bays that are in there to some to contractors, some to others. We're using parts for ourselves. And right now, it's, we don't have, we don't have any, we don't have any plans to make to sell it.
Well, would you plan to analyze financially, whether it's that's a good idea or not? When there are other other spaces that not not the garage bays, I mean, I think that's that's the part that's really saleable. Maybe
We don't own anything. That's because we own it. We're not paying rent on it.
Right, and I assume we're not paying any mortgage on this, which we've owned for how many years?
This thing here?
Yeah, this thing here. Sure you could. Just like the old firehouse. Just a suggestion to analyze how much you could sell it for and see whether it's really worth it to keep it for a drop-in center. Make us, you know, have a contingency on the sale that you're selling it and they have to keep the drop-in center there for three years or something. Just seems like we don't need to own a lot of buildings, which is my feeling about the old school. The town did not need to own that building, so.
Well, we're lacking storage, Meg, and that provides a significant amount of storage for for town kinds of operations that we were renting space or we were using the
And there's no
We're using the pole barn previously for a lot of things, so it's limited. We have we have committees and and like beautification who has to store things there in the wintertime, things of that nature. We have some machinery that we store there. And in addition to that, you know, the the front area is open to nonprofit places that cannot afford rent. So like AA is there, they're there every Friday and they fill the they fill the place. Voices of Hope has some ongoing programs there that are peer-to-peer and things of that nature. I've always felt that it's really a contribution by the town to be able to to offer a kitchen, a kitchen and meeting space there for nonprofits and social services so that so that hope, my hope is that we wouldn't have to go to Bennington or Brattleboro for folks to get the same the same services and Senior Solutions there, I think, every month, so.
Right, yeah, just, yeah, just as a comment, not about the money, but we've been able to have, offer free space to institution or programs like WIC, Women Infant Children's Program at the Old School, Southeastern Vermont Head Start is there, although they're not, they don't have the number of Wilmington or Dover participants that they thought, but there is a need and, you know, fortunately, we still have space to do that, too.
But that's good because my 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 pitch, if anyone asks me, is, you know, if you can be at OSEC, we're not, we're not trying to compete with OSEC.
Yeah, no.
We're just providing a different alternative for some some services that may not fit with OSEC.
Right.
And and from a
Still think we should sell it, but thank you.
And from
Obviously, Voices of Hope has a different clientele.
Right. No, I understand. Yeah, no, they explained that. Yeah.
We did have a serious, a serious problem with storage. In fact, let me ask you this, who's the bus driver?
The Fair Association, as far as I know, yeah.
No, they don't do the only other building.
Yeah, yeah, the two fair buildings. Yeah, it's a cool situation. Just if you want to delve into it, you know, OSEC owns the land, owns the nine acres, but they own the buildings, so and they're not paying any rent. They've been there forever. Yeah, right. No, apparently they own those two, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Meg. Ivy?
Hi, could I have the name of the person that just spoke?
Meg Streeter.
Thank you.
Welcome. The last item would be to transact any non-binding business. And that is the complete, complete warning.
Meg, how would you feel about selling the Memorial Hall? We're constantly putting money into the building. The heat in there is just ridiculous. Constantly needs maintenance. It gets very, very use. So it's kind of like, you know, I remember back when Sony was still which this goes way back. They had the same discussion of select they sell Memorial Hall, which at that time was even more shit. We've put, we've put some money in.
Bonnie, can you come up and so everyone can hear you?
I just wondered, I remember way back when it was given to the town, it was a condition that Crafts family was giving it to the town as long as it was used for the town and for activities and purposes of the town. So is that something that would prohibit the sale of it?
So who's the family?
Who's what?
Who's the family?
Crafts, Stanley Crafts, his daughter Penelope, those people.
Okay, so a quick thing about Memorial Hall, I only know this because Teresa and I just did a lot of digging into it with the town records. If for some reason the town did want to sell it, technically, we found no reason the town could not, but whoever buy it has to still maintain the photos on the wall and the service they held every year. That's what Teresa found.
Really?
Yes. I'm not saying I think the town should sell it, I'm just saying that there's nothing that Teresa found that stated the town could not potentially sell the building. If that answers a question.
Well, I just, you know, you you look at your buildings and you look at where you want to put your money. It's in the flood zone, flooded many times since I've been here. And so it's kind of like, what are you doing?
Sell the old town of the large or firehouse. That way you can sell the memorial hall. The memorial hall is really an asset.
In what way?
I just, Memorial Hall has a meaning to the town. It's been there forever and it is a memorial. We have had all kinds of activities there over the years. And yes, maybe it floods once in a while, but I'm pretty old and it's only flooded there badly once, as long as I'm gonna lie. But it's been used by the schools for plays and things. It's really kind of a nice community. Yeah, we don't have, you know, too many things, but people have rented it out for other uses, wedding receptions, funeral, you know, what have you. I just think it would be a shame to see it go because it's a nice-looking building and it's
Didn't say we were going to do that. You're saying, how would you feel?
I'm letting you know.
Thanks for asking, Tom.
So we're, we're, Bonnie, we're putting a significant amount of money into it starting this year. We've been working on grants since COVID and things did not move around, move along quite that, quite that much. About a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars will go into establishing putting basically anchors. It's a, it's an architectural feat of basically anchoring the building to the to the cement, which it's currently just sits there free. And the other part of that is for flood vents. In addition to that, we have municipal energy grant that we are likely to be working on the windows, a heat pump and one more thing, oh, and and to have the access in terms of bathrooms and the doors looked at and for ADA upgrades, upgrades or improvements. Now, that's not the only building that we're working on. This building we're working on and the highway building we're working on. Now, we only, we've only received three hundred thirteen thousand dollars to do all of that work. And I'm thinking when we go out to bid that it's going to be much higher than that. But we have, we have money in the capital fund. And then once that work is done, we need to start working on the exterior of the building.
Any other questions? So as far as the as far as the ballot questions and articles, I'm going to close this part of the meeting. Actually, open up our
I need to, I need you to close the meeting, then we'll come back. I need you to close the meeting, then we'll come back on Zoom. Please. Yeah, I have, I have a, I have another. Want to close? You ready?